We'll call this Bucks County Commissioners Meeting of February 3, 2021, to order, beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Evan Stone, the Director of our Planning Commission, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and...
Thank you. Just looking around the room, because we are still in the COVID restrictions, I don't see any row officers here that I need to introduce or anything for us, just checking. So we have a few presentations today, and the first one is from Bernard Griggs, our Project and Diversity Officer, in recognition of Black History Month, and we're glad you were able to join us today.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to remove my mask since the sound system isn't working well. Thank you and good morning. I'm Bernard Griggs, Project and Diversity Officer here at Bucks County, and I wanted to take a moment today to speak to you about our recognition of Black History Month here at Bucks County as we celebrate Black History Month for the month of February. And as the month begins, I think it's important to note how and why the month of February became the month in which Black History Month would be celebrated. Well, Black History Month really began as Negro History Week, a label applied by historian Carter G. Woodson in 1926. It was during that time in history that Woodson was bothered by the fact that many textbooks and other historical reviews minimized or ignored the contributions of Black figures. Along with his association for the study of Negro life and history later, Woodson would earmark the second week of February to raise awareness of these stories. Woodson chose that week specifically because it covered the birthdays of American abolitionist Frederick Douglass, whose birthday was February the 14th, and President Abraham Lincoln, whose birthday was February the 12th. The ensuing publicity led to many mayors and college campuses to recognize the week through the years, and the groundswell of support allowed the occasion to stretch throughout the entire month. And in 1976, President Gerald Ford made Black History Month official by saying that he was urging everyone to, quote, "seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every endeavor throughout our history." And so each year, as Black History Month is celebrated, among the notable figures often spotlighted are Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who fought for equal rights for Blacks during the 1950s and 60s; Thurgood Marshall, the first African-American justice appointed to the United States Supreme Court in 1967; May Jemson, who became the first female African-American astronaut to travel to space in 1992; Barack Obama, who was elected the first ever African-American President of the United States in 2008; and now added to the list of figures Kamala Harris, who was elected as the first ever African-American Vice President of the United States just last year in 2020. So we'll be mindful here at Bucks County as we keep in mind the significance of Black History and as we carry out certain activities in the coming weeks in observance of Black History Month. I'm going to ask you to keep an eye to the website for updates as we will be doing a special presentation at the next Commissioners Meeting right here in this room on February the 17th. And so just moving on while I have the podium here, I also wanted to take the opportunity to give you a quick update on the Walking While Black: Love is the Answer program. The Walking While Black: Love is the Answer program is a film by the actor and writer A.J. Ali that has real-life events that happened in the community relative to police officers and folks in the community. And so how the program works is a group of people watch the one-hour online film, and then afterwards, a one-hour discussion about how the film made you feel takes place. And I will tell you from experience that the film is really hard to watch and that the conversation afterwards is a must and really opens up a very important dialogue. And so it's been proven that participating in the program can really have a positive impact, not only on helping bridge the gap between peace officers and folks in the community, but also can help create a better atmosphere in the workplace. And so that's why this program became a very important initiative of the Commissioners here at the county to make the program available to all county employees countywide. So led by county leadership in collaboration with Bucks County Peace Center and the District Attorney's Office, we were able to roll this program out and over a 17-week period of time get 1,575 county employees through the program. And as we continue to collect and monitor the feedback from folks that participated in the program so far, the feedback has been very positive, and the feedback has also provided information for us to help tailor our future diversity and inclusion programs. So I'll keep it brief just closing here. I will tell you that although the program has concluded for now, we are planning to run the program again in late March or early April for county employees that may not have had the opportunity to take it the first time around, and we will also be making it available at some point in time in the near future also to the public. So stay tuned and keep an eye to the website for updates as we get everything sort of figured out here. That will conclude my report.
Thank you. I just would add that if anybody's watching is interested in Walking While Black and bringing it to their school, their church, or synagogue, or anything, you can contact Bernard, you can contact me, you can contact the District Attorney. So we would be happy to make the connection so that you could have that film and discussion afterwards. Any questions from?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard.
Thank you. And Evan Stone, our Director of the Planning Commission, is here to talk to us about alternative energy, which is important and a very hot topic these days.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Yeah, it's a little hard to make an energy ordinance exciting at 10:30 in the morning, but you know, as often is our practice, and really it was at the suggestion of Commissioner Harvey, we'll distribute model ordinances to address planning issues which are related towards our municipalities. Renewable alternative energy is certainly one of those topics, as you mentioned. Solar energy is making a renewed push into the marketplace, however, Pennsylvania still does not have a solar access law. The regulation of solar form and other forms of energy production, like many other uses, falls to each of our municipalities to regulate and govern through local zoning ordinances. The good news in Bucks County is that nearly 55% of our municipalities have some form of alternative energy ordinance upon the books. These ordinances allow for wind, they allow for solar, they allow for geothermal and biofuel production methods, but what we find, however, is that these energy sources are not usually combined under one holistic document, and their regulations vary. So at the suggestion of Commissioner Harvey, we developed an inclusive model alternative energy ordinance, which brings alternative renewable energy production methods into one guiding document. One of the other important elements to this is that the ordinance also provides examples of various incentives and bonuses, such as density bonuses or reduced permitting fees, which could be included to encourage the use and incorporation of alternative energy systems. It's one thing to regulate them, but what we would like to see is give people incentive to include them at the beginning of a project in its early planning stages. So these incentives could be used for both residential and non-residential developments, particularly when you think about the large-scale warehouses that we're seeing developed across the county. Perfect example and opportunity for solar on roofs. The ordinance provides passive energy conservation methods as well. This is guidance for building placement, building orientation, thermal walls, green roofs, and landscaping, which all are passive things that you can do to supplement energy reduction in an alternative energy systems. The model ordinance that we've prepared builds on ordinances, successful ordinances from across the county and municipalities such as North Hampton, Buckingham, Haycock, and Doylestown townships. It was further developed using model ordinance language from the DVRPC, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and the model ordinance was peer-reviewed by DVRPC staff, as well as a local engineer and a local municipal manager with a background in planning and architecture. The ordinance specifically does not address utility-scale alternative energy systems because we wanted to keep it to the scale of the systems that we typically see or are likely to see here in the county at the residential and non-residential scale. As with any model ordinance, it is being provided as a recommendation and a guidance document based on what we believe to be sound and researched evidence-based practice. It is adaptable and flexible for each municipality as they deem applicable. Providing zoning guidance for these alternative energy systems manages expectations for both the residents and developers that may be looking to build a project in the municipality. It establishes a framework which removes the uncertainty, and they know exactly what they can and can't do. The model ordinance can be found on our Planning Commission website under our Community Planning section, and we trust that the municipalities will find it useful. The slide that you see up just provides some of the oversight, highlights of what I just went through. Couple of things just to note, again, we believe that, you know, clean energy and alternative energy, it supports air quality and reduces our dependence on fossil fuels. As I said, this brings together all of these various forms of alternative energy under one guidance document. And also, we believe that by our municipalities adopting similar-type ordinances, it improves the resiliency of the traditional energy distribution grid by allowing for these alternative energy sources. And as I said, it is adaptable and flexible, and the website is listed up on the slide.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Now, I want to personally thank Mr. Stone and all his staff at the Planning Commission for all the work they put into this over the past year. A lot of research and a lot of kind of back-and-forth with different professionals to try and get this to where it is. It has been provided to elected officials and township and borough managers in all 54 municipalities. They have, you know, this document, and as Mr. Stone said, a lot of, 55% of the communities have something on the books already. In some cases, I know we had something in Falls Township when I was there, but that was quite a while ago, and so it certainly could need some updating, could use some updating, and other communities have pieces of this, but not the entire thing. And this model, I think, is really something that can be used by any municipality. They can tailor it, as Mr. Stone said, to whatever fits their specific community's needs. And the incentives could be something that applied to just somebody who's, you know, building a house or improving their home, or building a warehouse, or some other kind of structure that could use this. And we really think that it's something that's, we believe, is pretty unique, you know, across the Commonwealth, and so we're hoping that it gets a lot of, gets a lot of use and we're making sure that people are aware of it, and hopefully we'll start seeing it get adopted into local zoning ordinances across the county.
Well, and thank you for working on it. This has been an important project for you, and, you know, we're grateful for that.
Yeah, Evan, thank you. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for your work on this, and Bob, too, thank you. I know you took the lead on this, and just in a general sense, I mean, protecting the environment should be important to everyone, and politically, it should not be a, it, both sides, Republicans and Democrats, should look at this as something that's important. This idea of global warming being a hoax, it is not a hoax. It is real, and if we don't start doing things, not only here in Bucks County, but in this country and around the world, to stop this idea of global warming, and certainly alternative energy could be a very, very big part of this. So, I mean, we've all got to work together because protecting the environment is important, and when we look at our children and grandchildren, I mean, there's the biggest reason why we need to do something about protecting the environment. We need to leave a county, a state, a country that's in good shape environmentally, and, you know, I was very proud of my work when I was up in Harrisburg on working on these issues, on the environment and alternative energy, and thank you very much for your good work. And Bob, thanks again for taking the lead on this.
Thank you. Speaking of local work, and that's where it all begins, and we can all do something, I would ask Commissioner Harvey to introduce our next presentation with Jim Miller.
It is interesting, you know, Mr. Miller is the Chairman of the West Rock Hill Township Board Supervisors, and it's completely kind of unrelated to what, you know, we were working on here at the county level. West Rock Hill has really taken a big jump forward and probably is now sort of the leader in this county in terms of looking at solar energy, so I invited him to come and talk about the project they're doing.
Thank you for coming down here.
Thank you for letting me come in and speak today. First of all, thank you, Evan, for everything you're doing. We're really excited to see this coming together at a county level. You're going to, what I'm going to say today talks more about the county than just what we're doing, so I appreciate that. My name is Jim Miller, and just for the record, I'm Vice Chair of the Commissioners this year. We rotate our positions, so. And I'm also honored to have served on the Bucks County Environment and Energy Subcommittee that you created as part of your transition team. First, a little bit about West Rock Hill. Our township is in the northwest corner of Bucks County and covers 16 and 1/2 square miles with a population of approximately 5,300 people. Our goal is to improve the lives of the residents and visitors while maintaining our low tax, the lowest tax rate in Bucks County for any township with a full-time police department. In just the past year, we've completed an energy audit, and it upgraded our township building with energy-efficient glass, re-insulated the building, and resealed leaking windows. Additionally, we have installed a handicapped entranceway, installed surveillance cameras around the property for security, upgraded our audio system, installed a video system to record meetings and make them available on our website for transparency. We have also reduced our expenses by $150,000 by eliminating taxpayer-funded health insurance for supervisors and their families, renegotiating our open-space loan and our police department building loan, and of course, the savings from the energy audit actions. When COVID-19 hit, we were prepared because we had converted to cloud-based data services and established a virtual phone network. When the emergency declaration was announced, our employees immediately moved to a virtual work environment with no loss of productivity, and we began holding video meetings the very next day. Most recently, we installed an EV charging station in our park so visitors can charge their electric cars while they walk our trails, enjoy sporting events, or just socialize. I'm here today to announce that we are finalizing the installation of a ground-mounted solar system. Can't work without these. A ground-mounted solar system that will generate 100% of our taxpayer-funded electrical needs. We expect the system to produce electricity for the next 40 years and provide energy for our heating, cooling, lighting, and other needs of the township building. Additionally, it will power our streetlights, wells, park system, and traffic signals. We expect to generate 90 megawatts of electric annually, which will also cover our future needs as we plan for EV municipal vehicles. The installation is under contract with Exact Solar, a local company based in Yardley, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. We will be joined by students and instructors from the Upper Bucks Technical School, who will work with Exact Solar on the construction and electrical aspects of the project. Students will also participate in the planning and installation of the security fencing, as well as planning and installation of ground cover consisting of Pennsylvania native pollinators and other native flora. We have applied for a PICO grant through Natural Lands Trust for partial funding of the ground cover. I want to thank Evan for pointing me in that direction. The Pen Ridge School District has been approached to possibly create a documentary-style video showing construction, including interviews about the installation and advantage of renewable energy. A solar array will be available to other municipalities and schools for interactive tours, and we will be available to work with any others who plan to go this way in the future. We're asking Bucks County to join us. To be successful, municipalities need to consider how they're going to fund the project. The long-term savings outweigh the upfront costs, but there's still a hefty outlay. Municipalities are not eligible for tax advantages, and this could be a showstopper. West Rock Hill expects to generate over a half a million dollars' worth of electric through the life of the system. We're asking you to develop a plan whereby municipalities can receive subsidies and/or other relief benefits that incentivize more projects and relieve the overall cost of transfer, transitioning to renewable energy. One example might be to subsidize based on the amount of installed wattage or estimated production. We see this as an opportunity for county to start setting standards with real-life experience and use West Rock Hill as a scalable model. The success of Bucks County on this initiative can begin today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Questions?
I mean, it's, first off, thank you for, and the rest of the supervisors and the administration for, of West Rock Hill, for really kind of taking all those steps. I don't, not really aware of any other municipality that's going as far as you are. And it's interesting, you know, we do have a couple more things we're going to be rolling out in a couple of weeks regarding solar. We are working, we've had a meeting already talking about a C-PACE program here in the county. We're talking about a power purchase agreement with a couple neighboring counties that could lead to the construction of a very large-scale solar panel facility. And so we're definitely moving in the right direction. We're chasing you a little bit, so, but we're, we want to catch up.
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, change, big change, always has to start in a small spot, so it has started with you, so thank you for being that small spot and having the courage to do that.
Thank you. Jim, just thanks for being here. Great, great project and a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Anybody in the audience, or any online public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from January 20th, 2021, and Items 1 through 14C?
So moved.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Moving on to the regular agenda, number 15. Agricultural preservation with Chukar LLC out of Percasie, Pennsylvania, approve the county's portion of an 11.51-acre agricultural conservation easement on the Chukar farm located on Keller's Church Road in Bedminster Township. This is at $138,120, including settlement charges and adjustments. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. My name is John Ives. I work with Evan in the Planning Commission. I'm Director of the Agricultural Land Preservation.
Thank you for being here.
But I also want to thank you for your generous allocation of funds for farmland preservation and to keep preserving farms in Bucks County. It proves your commitment and passion for preserving our agricultural heritage in Bucks County.
And how many will this be? Do you know? How many will this be? 250?
It will be, we already have two other preserved ones, so it will be 233.
233, okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
So the farm I'm here to present today is called the Chukar Farm, and just a quick fun fact about what a Chukar is. It is a small game bird, Partridge family, related to peasants and quails, just so everyone knows that upfront. So it is a small farm, and as you mentioned, it is located on Keller's Church Road in Bedminster Township. Next slide. It is very important because it is located adjacent to over 280 already-preserved acres in our program, and it is within close proximity to 14 other preserved farms that were preserved through our farmland preservation program. You can see on this graphic, the farms outlined in purple are all preserved farms through our program. Next slide. The farm is very productive and fertile soils. It's considered all prime agricultural soils, and it will be preserved as a crop farm with the rotating crops of corn and soybeans. Another benefit to saving this farm is that it preserves the scenic views along Keller's Church Road and Fred's Valley Road, and this farm ranked number six on our overall list of farms to be preserved. Next slide. The farm has an old homestead and some outbuildings that will remain, and what we are proposing it to be a county easement at a cost of $138,120, which equates to $12,000 an acre. Ultimately, if approved, it will be the 44th farm preserved in Bedminster, so I'm hoping with your approval to move forward with security.
Thank you. Any questions today?
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it, and the whole staff.
Thank you. I think this is our first time we've had a farm this year, so, right? This is our first one?
Yeah. And hopefully be back with, we have a 200-acre farm up for preservation that we're working on right now, so.
Terrific.
Coming up soon.
All right, good.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Number 16 on the, is the Commissioners' Office, U.S. Department of the Treasury approving acceptance of funds from the COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program in the amount of $18,720,516.20. Go ahead, Ms. McKevitt, did you want to speak to this?
This funding is coming from the U.S. Treasury Department. It's a little over $18.7 million. It is related to two items on the agenda today underneath Community and Housing Development who will administer this program. We will have a formal kickoff at the next Commissioners' Meeting where Jeff Fields will come and present the specifics of the program.
Terrific. Any questions for Margie on that? This is an important program, and we know it takes a while to roll it out, but we're excited to begin. Number 17, this is under Health, AMI Expeditionary Healthcare LLC approving a contract extension to provide COVID-19 testing services and transition to vaccines at the amount of $195,615, and also with AMI approving a contract to provide public COVID-19 vaccination services in the amount of $14,194,102. Ms. McKevitt, do you want to speak to this one, too, or?
I am going to yield my time to Audrey Kenny, who is serving as Interim Director of Emergency Services, and she will talk about our contracting with AMI.
I appreciate that. Welcome.
Good morning. So everybody has to take my mask off.
Sure.
Thanks. Thanks for having me here today. We've been, Emergency Services has been partnering with the Health Department to work out public vaccination sites. I know this has been a very hot topic for a lot of us. So we spent the better part of four weeks vetting sites throughout the county to provide centrally-located and good locations to filter our community, our residents, too. When the vaccines become available in the county, that's also the sticking point. AMI has been a great partner. They've been doing our public COVID testing at the three community colleges, and they are in the throes of planning out how they're going to stand up their vaccination clinics. So they have some of their staff who remain in the county to start working on making that transition over for us. Initially, it's our intent to vaccinate up to 500 people per day at our six locations. We are going to start small at just the three community colleges initially to keep up with the amount of vaccines that we have available. We are continuing to work with our hospital partners on a weekly basis to see what capacity they have and what additional staffing or what additional vaccines they have at their disposal. And it's just in our ongoing combat of the pandemic here in the county.
Thank you. And we'll all ask you questions. I just, you mentioned that this is like an issue, the vaccinations. It's probably the most emails I've ever gotten has been about this. The next one was testing for COVID. So the most important thing that I just want to share with the public today is that this is a supply chain issue, that we would be vaccinating everybody right now. We are ready to go. We have the staff. We have AMI. The issue is we do not have the vaccine. So as they are making them, they go to the federal government. The federal government sends them to the states. Each state has their own plan. So we, as the county, our job is to just deliver them, but we can't get them for you until they come. So, you know, we're all stuck in that. I don't know if my colleagues have other things they'd like to add on that or questions?
Commissioner Marsega said it perfectly. We're ready to go. I just want all the residents of Bucks County know that we are ready to go as soon as we get the vaccine. And again, we are just waiting on the state, and the state is waiting on the federal government. So as soon as that happens, whether this week, next week, two weeks from now, we're ready to go, and we're going to move as quickly as possible to try to get everybody, especially in the 1A phase initially, get them all vaccinated first as quickly as possible, and then move to the other phases. So, thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, well, thank you, Ms. Kenny, for all the work you've been doing and your staff, and obviously the Dr. Dampster and the Health Department, too. Excuse me. The only thing I would add really to what has been said already regarding vaccine supply is to remind people, you know, this is the worst pandemic. I'm trying to stay away from the unprecedented word. This is the worst pandemic in 100 years since the Spanish Flu, so-called Spanish Flu, 18, 1918, 1919. But this is the largest vaccination program in human history. Period. End of discussion. There was no vaccination program 100 years ago. The flu just ran out, basically. And it's still a little bit of a mystery scientifically as to why that happened. So, you know, in terms of planning, you know, and changing from what administration to another, and what was done and wasn't done, and what's being done now, the county really has a very limited amount of control over what's happening with the vaccine. I think some people are assuming that we're getting all the vaccine, and then we're giving it to hospitals and pharmacies and so, and that is not the case at all. In fact, we usually find out that pharmacies have vaccine because people start emailing us, telling us, hey, this pharmacy has vaccine. We know that just yesterday, I think it was the Biden administration announced that they want to put, you know, more vaccine out, a million vaccines out to pharmacies across the country. We don't, we have no idea which pharmacies in Bucks County will get those. We have no idea how much they'll get. That doesn't come through us at all. It is certainly, you know, not ideal in terms of, from our perspective sitting up here, because people are looking to us for answers, and we oftentimes don't have them because we're not really in the decision-making process. We are doing our best. I believe the people in Harrisburg are doing their best. I believe the people in Washington, D.C. are doing their best. I believe Moderna and Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson are all doing their best. And so we are asking everyone just to, you know, to be patient. You know, we are doing, you know, what we can. We're controlling the things we can control. We're looking forward to getting these vaccination sites up. If you've registered already, we have your information. That information will be used to generate appointments. That'll be sent to you either by phone or email, whichever you chose, and we'll start getting people scheduled to come in and get vaccines. So it's just a matter of, we can only vaccinate enough people based on what we get. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. And just a reminder, if anybody's listening who has not pre-registered, you can go on the portal on the Bucks County website for vaccine and pre-register. So we encourage everybody to do that. And thank you. This is the most Herculean part of this, is the planning, and you've done that, and we're ready, and so, you know, we're sleeping at night knowing that we're ready, but not so much because we want them to come here, so, thank you.
We have, just one last piece. We have submitted our registration to the State Department of Health to register all of our clinical locations. So, just one hurdle that we've tackled.
Terrific. Thank you, and thank your staff for everything that they've done. Number 18 is from Parks and Recreation, the Bucks County Conservation District out of Doylestown, approving a contract to remove accumulated sediment, establish wetland plants, and install habitat features within the 17-acre conservation pool of Lake Luxembourg in the amount of $1 million. Kevin Spencer will talk to us about this, and geez, I was a supervisor in Middletown Township in the 1990s, and we were, there was a flood, and we were looking for this then, so sometimes things take a little time, but it's good to see it's here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I've been asked just to kind of speak on behalf of the county portion of this, but it's really the Conservation District has been the lead on this project. It's kind of a neat work within Bill and our Parks Department has been working very closely with them. It's a pleasure to kind of present the kind of the overall summary of this project to you today. So, a couple of things next slide, Randy, if you can. Brief highlight, this is the kind of the Port Creek Drainage Area. It's just over six square miles. And to kind of put that in perspective, if for all of you, if you had an inch of rainfall in that six square miles, that equates to about 106,357,914 gallons of water. So when we have some of the larger rainstorms, this is just one drainage area within Bucks County. There's a lot of larger ones. All those areas, obviously not all that water is going to make its way into the streams, depending on what the surfaces are, depending on whether you have an asphalt surface or grass or meadow or different surface types. There's coefficients ratios as to how much that will be absorbed and how much will run off. But the larger part of this is kind of where we're moving towards, and you'll see kind of in the next slide, Randy, if you can go there. This is kind of Woodburn Road, kind of cuts the lake in half there. There's a bridge there in Middletown Township. We're just kind of southeast of Newtown is where this is located for those looking. But that red kind of boundary is what we're calling the conservation pool. One of these you'll kind of notice in this picture, there's kind of the deeper water, the darker water, that's kind of still water, but you see kind of those areas where there's some pigments and there's kind of the tanner color in the water. It's actually sediment. You can actually see in some of those larger storm rates events, we do have runoff that comes down. You will get the sediment. You can kind of see what we're looking at here within this picture as to why this project's important. The top view is just kind of a view looking up towards that conservation pool as you cross the bridge there on Woodburn Road. Randy, next slide, please. Princeton Hydro has been working with the Conservation District relative to the overall study. This is the entire, it's a bathymetric study of the entire Lake Luxembourg, which is our port creek. So you have the lower portion there all the way down to our dam, and then you have kind of, what we're focusing on is that upper far top-right portion there. You see kind of where Woodburn Road cuts the blue in half. That's really the area that we're focusing on. It's about 17 acres. The mean water depth in that area of the pool, conservation pool, is about 1.3 feet. The deepest portion in that conservation pool is just as you cross under the bridge, it's about a little over five feet there. So, for context, from a water depth standpoint. Next slide, Randy. This is actually a similar bathymetric study, but this is actually studying the sediment deposit in that lake. If you remember that aerial photo, you saw a lot of the sedimentation in the water. This is actually a study that Princeton Hydro had done as they're reviewing this and analyzing this. Those contours are actually how deep the sediment is. So in that conservation pool, we have kind of a mean sediment thickness around, just under three feet. The deepest part is around seven, three, seven, just over seven feet of sediment in the thickness area. It's kind of in that, the darker brown areas there, about middle portion of the conservation pool area there. So, if you look at the total amount of sediment that they've calculated in there, it's about 77,000 cubic yards. Thinking back to the gallons of water, that equates to just over 15 million gallons of water. What that sediment represents, it's there, it's not allowing about 15 and a half million gallons of water to enter that conservation pool because the sediment has risen up in that area. So, and Randy, next slide. Project that Conservation District will be taking on, a couple of the goals here we've kind of outlined. We're going to protect the existing wildlife. We actually have some bald eagles that nest in that area. You'll see them from time to time as you're driving by. We have red-bellied turtles that are in that area. And part of this project, there's plans in place, there's times of the year when they can work and they can't work in order to protect the wildlife that is there. Sediment removal is one of the big goals of this. We're going to, they're going to remove about 14,000 cubic yards of sediment out of there. That's of the total, we estimate about 77,000 cubic yards that's in there. They're going to take out about 14,000. The rest will kind of be removed, like moved around and re-contoured, essentially to recreate that conservation pool. Area that's, you just kind of see where the hatched area narrows there, just above that, upstream of that contour there. They're going to kind of recreate that conservation pool up there. And what that'll do is as the water enters, it'll allow that water to slow. There are times of the year when you will see when the water level in the overall lake drops, you won't see any water at all in this area. So this will kind of recreate that pool again. It'll also re-establish, you know, some habitat of roughly about seven acres where they're going to recreate wetlands along the fringes of that conservation pool there. There's going to be water quality improvements. They're going to be improving the TMDOs, which are total maximum daily loads of, I think phosphate or phosphorus was the one main element that they're going to be improving the water quality with this project. And ultimately, the goal with this as well is to minimize future maintenance. So the access areas that are being put in as part of the project are going to remain, will remain, so that they're in place for future, you know, maintenance efforts that will have to take place, so. What's on the agenda today? If you can go to the next slide, Randy? Thank you. Just kind of overall of the funding for this project. So the Conservation District has gone out and raised just about $1.3 million in grant funding. The county match that is before you, Commissioners, is just about $1 million. So overall, you're looking at about a $2.3 million project. That will be kind of removing, fixing, you know, that conservation pool that is there, recreating that habitat, providing that additional water quality, so. Any questions?
Do they have a start date? I know they have to be careful, but do they have any?
I don't know that they have a specific start date yet. They're working that out, and a lot of that depends on the contract process for them yet, as well as the timing of the year, when they can physically start with the eagles and the turtles and different wildlife that are there. As soon as we have one, I can get that to you.
Well, thank you. Questions, Gene? Questions?
Is there a projection? First off, thank you very much. It was really, I think for a lot of people, they're getting sort of a geography and geology lesson, science lesson in terms of that, because it does make sense for people that live in that area that say, well, there's flooding, and now you know why. There's 15 million gallons of water that are supposed to go to a place, and there's no place for it to go. Is there an estimate in terms of, you know, this is done, this, okay, the dredging is finished, how long until the dredging has to be done again?
I don't have the answer to that question.
That's right. Yeah.
This dam was constructed in the 70s.
Okay.
One of the other projects that we've been working on with the National Resource Conservation Service, who actually constructed the dam, is kind of a rehab of the actual dam structure. So they've been in the process of, it's been a federally funded project. They're going through and doing the engineering study on that. Commissioner, you may remember, we did a presentation two years back. They're close to the point now where we actually have a design, they're working out some final things. And that's, the dam has about a 50-year lifespan. When we started that project, we originally expected to seal a lot more sediment in the actual lake itself. One of the things that Woodburn Road actually did with that narrowing at that bridge right there, it kind of saved the rest of the lake in that it slowed the water up front there provided it here. So this will continue to provide that, what we call a protective feature, in that most of the sediment is not ending up in the main water area, the dam area, and the flood structure area. This will continue, but as far as how long down the road, we're at 50 years now, give or take.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm guessing if we need, if it was causing some flooding, though, in the 90s, it's possible it's somewhere over 20 at least? Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
So is there a motion to approve items 15 through 18 on the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And we have a budget adjustment. Aye. We have Dave Buscol here for that.
Good morning, Commissioners. What we have before you this morning for consideration is two 2021 budget adjustments. The first one is a carryforward of the first COVID stimulus money that was passed, the CARES money, an estimated $4.5 million in revenue carried forward into '21, and that allows for the continued expenditure for projects, programs that are completing at the beginning of 2021, and computers that we had purchased for remote work. Adjustment number two refers to item number 16A that the board just approved from the U.S. Department of Treasury, the Emergency Rental Assistance Money, $18 million. This again recognizes that revenue for the program and allows for the expenditures under that program. Neither of these adjustments has any impact on the general fund.
Great. Any questions, then? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much. Moving to personnel actions and that approval, two things. First, I would ask that we remove the park and rec, I guess they were per diem items that are listed here. They don't need to be on here, and those people are staying with us coming back in the spring, and that is items 35 through 40, 40 to 46, 48 to 49, and 52 to 54. And I would also like to state that I have, will be abstaining on item number 29. I am related to the person in that position. Is there a motion for approval of the personnel list with those changes?
Okay. Do you want to do two motions? Do one motion without number 29, and then one motion just 29?
We can do it that way. I was just going to abstain when I said my vote, but that's fine.
So Commissioner DeGraal, do you want to do your original motions for everybody except number 29?
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
And I'll make a motion to approve number 29.
Second.
So I guess all in favor, and all abstain. Any board appointments today?
Yeah, three board appointments to the Emergency Health Advisory Council. These are individuals who meet with the rescue squads to give guidance to them throughout the county. So two of these are reappointments, Mr. Earl Bruck and Ms. Deb Mayet. Both of those will expire February 1st, 2024, and a new appointment is Mr. Tom Topley, and he will also expire 2/1/2024.
Terrific. Is there a second for those motions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that's it for today?
Yep.
Any other civics? If anybody has any?
I don't have any, no.
I don't have any either. Okay. With the chief operating officer's report, Ms. McKevitt?
I really don't have much today. I just wanted to thank our general services staff for all their hard work and long hours shoveling and plowing over the past three days, along with our 24/7 operations, emergency services staff, and the folks in the Emergency Operations Center, 911, Corrections, Nursing Home, and Youth Center. Thank you all for coming in and in some cases staying overnight. We really appreciate all the work that you put in to keeping our county operations functioning. Notwithstanding this weather event, we have ended by appointment-only operations for the county that ended on February first, coincidentally with our closing of the county. But we ask that all visitors to county facilities, please wear your masks, social distance, use the drop boxes for departments and offices that, that have them in the front foyer of, of the admin building where appropriate, and call, call the offices if you need anything. And as I said earlier about our rental assistance program, that is going to be launching next, over the next two weeks. Our community development, Housing Community Development Office is working very hard to get that up and running. They are going to be training about twenty staff people in the call center to accept applications using a, a software program called Neighborly to do the intake. We are going to get that money out on the street as quickly as possible. There's also, we're also monitoring Senate bill, I think, one oh nine. Couple of things in, in that bill regarding, related to rental assistance programs and also funding for hospitality industry, restaurants, and hotels. We're closely monitoring that bill to see how that progresses and if funding will become available for those two sources for our restaurants, hotels, and then additional rental assistance program. And that's, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Ms. McHavitt? Thank you. Solicitors' report?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, and thank you really, which I can't say enough, for the privilege of being able to serve the county. As, as we look back after we've had inauguration and transfer of power in this country, I don't think it's an understatement to say that there wasn't any work that we in the Law Department were more privileged to do than helping the incredible Board of Elections ensure that we conducted free and fair elections here in Bucks County and that we protected the right to vote for all Bucks County citizens. This was incredibly difficult work on the staff side that was done by an army of staff and volunteers, reported to our Board of Elections, Tom Freitag, to our chief clerk, Gail Humphrey, to our chief operating officer, Margie McHavitt, and of course, the Board of Elections itself. Many folks are aware that the commissioners typically do double duty as the Board of Commissioners and then also as the Board of Elections. When one of those members is on the ballot in a given election, as happened during the primary election last year, a Court of Common Pleas Judge will then sit by designation as, as a member or members of the board. And so for, for basically half of the year, the Board of Commissioners consisted of Commissioners Marseglia and DiGeralamo, as well as Court of Common Pleas Judge Brian McGuffin. And Judge McGuffin wanted to come over and, and I think stand up here as we made a few more comments, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Judge McGuffin.
Good morning, Your Honor. Thank you for joining us.
I think, I speak for, for all of us when I say from a legal standpoint, 2020 really represented a perfect storm of challenges for the Law Department here. Obviously, we were dealing with a pandemic which impacted all aspects of county life. But this was happening at a time that the, the administration was being very clear, telling everyone to stay home when possible, to comply with statewide orders to protect everyone's safety. And at the same time, we had to actually make sure that people could come in person and, and vote, and we could protect the health of those voters, of the poll workers who were dedicated to making sure this election worked, and the county at large, to make sure that we were not worsening the community spread that was happening throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. We were also dealing with, with completely new voting laws, primarily Act 77, which significantly allowed for the opportunity for people to cast their votes by mail, which created an unanticipated explosion in mail-in voting. And fortunately for, for everyone in Bucks County, this board was deeply committed to ensuring that everyone had a right, had the opportunity to vote, and was extremely creative in, in coming up with solutions such as drop boxes and satellite voting, satellite offices, what was often called voting on demand, all kinds of creative opportunities that required an interpretation of a law that was brand new, where there was no legal guidance from courts, where anything that was going to be done was vulnerable to being second-guessed and challenged in, in court. There were, and, and I apologize for using the word, but there really were unprecedented issues with the U.S. mail in 2020, both because of the, the surge in mail-in voting, and then for other reasons, having to do with the availability of mailboxes and, and issues with the postal service that again presented legal challenges, specifically with a law that did not have, in, in the view of the board, enough time built in to give everyone the time they needed to do what they had to do. And, and those who attend these meetings or watch them know that repeatedly this board called on the legislature to, to create solutions, create fixes to these challenges, and none came. And so it, it came to, to the county to, to, to provide that help itself. And then there were, of course, the baseless and relentless attacks on the integrity of the process. And we were sadly reminded of, of how that continued outside of court with, with attacks on, on the vote in Pennsylvania, which included Bucks County. But that, that also happened in court, and, and that took the form of all kinds of challenges. In particular, the, the Trump for president campaign took the county to court repeatedly in, in local court, in state court, and in federal court. And, and as, as proud as, as, as I certainly am of the law department that has been built over the past year, it, it became very clear as we, as we approached that first election under Act 77, the, the spring primary, that as, as we were still a couple of months away from having full-time assistance solicitors, that we were going to need some outside help. And what we would need would be somebody who was willing to, as literally on the eve of, of the election, drop everything that they were doing, throw themselves headfirst into uncharted territory, be somebody who could, who could not only have the intellect to grasp entirely new and novel legal issues, but could also do so with the respect of the courts, of the respect of, of the players, of the local parties, somebody that could project the integrity that this board projects in everything that they do. And fortunately for, for the county, Jessica Vanderkam, who's here with us today, answered that call. We are incredibly appreciative to Ms. Vanderkam for her tireless and frankly incredible efforts to help the county pull off miracles, again, that was done by the foot soldiers and the staff on Election Day and in, in the weeks and months preceding and following the elections. When we think about what was going on in court, even after the election was over, there were continual challenges, again, specifically by the Trump campaign, to disqualify, to disenfranchise voters. There were voters who did everything right, they went in, they, they did what they were told, they filled out their applications, and in some cases, they, they put their address on the, on the wrong line when it was already on the address, or they, they signed in the wrong place. And the board very carefully considered all these issues and following the law, counted ballots when they could be counted, allowed people the, the franchise of voting when it was permitted. And these challenges continued. We were, we were taken to court here in Bucks County in the Court of Common Pleas, and when we, when we were successful there, and all of the votes that the board had agreed and voted in a very transparent way to count, when, when the court agreed with our position, the fight continued. We were taken up to the Commonwealth Court, we were taken up to the Supreme Court. Those attorneys who, who practice appellate law know that appellate practice is very challenging. Attorneys often get months to produce legal briefs. Certainly that's true with very complex issues and cases where you can't look at other briefs that were done on similar issues when you're doing a, a brand-new, a, a brand-new issue. Jessica, leading our, our staff, helped us produce a legal brief to the Commonwealth Court in about two and a half hours, because that's about how much time we were given. And, and we prevailed. And, and the Commonwealth Court, again, validated our position, upheld the result, this continued to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. I could go on and on. The, the point that I hope is, is coming across is that this was, this was truly almost a year of, 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 of thankless public service from someone who was not a full-time county employee, who really did this as a labor of love. And that brings me to, to the reason that, that we're here. Jessica thinks that we were just going to do an overview of the election, but what we really wanted to do was to take this opportunity to, to really say thanks. And, and with that, if I could ask Judge McGuffin to present her words to Ms. Vanderkam.
I'd be happy. Thank you, Solicitor Khan. Morning, Commissioners. I'd like to start by saying I'm very, very proud to have served on the Board of Elections through all of 2019. I served with my two colleagues, Judge McMaster and Judge Fritsch. And then in 2020, when the Commissioner Board, I'm sorry, 2019, when the Commissioner Board had been elected into 2020, and Commissioner Harvey was still running for election as a national delegate and such, I was asked to serve for an additional eight months or so, and I was very proud to serve in that capacity. I will say the word on the street is that the Facebook ratings tripled when Commissioner Harvey took over for me. So I'm a little sad about that, but nonetheless, thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for allowing me to serve and for your excellent work in the last four or five months of the campaign. I'm very proud also to have an opportunity to read this plaque and the declaration to Ms. Vanderkam. Ms. Vanderkam and I are friends. I have so much respect for the work that she did and that all of the members of the Board of Elections did, Clerk Humphrey and of course, Mr. Freitag. But Ms. Vanderkam's legal efforts on behalf of the county in making sure that all lawfully valid registered voters who cast lawfully permissible ballots, that they had those ballots counted properly and lawfully, is something that she can be very, very proud of. And so, on behalf of the Bucks County Commissioners and the Bucks County Board of Elections and the Law Department, we'd like to thank and congratulate Jessica Lynn Vanderkam as the election solicitor and defender of democracy for the 2020 primary and general elections. Ms. Vanderkam, would you come forward, please? Just have a stand with us here for just a second. This plaque is offered to you in recognition of your wise counsel, your outstanding advocacy, your creative problem solving, your commitment to civil liberties. You are commended for your dedicated service to the citizens of Bucks County in protecting the right to vote in two historic elections. It is presented by Commissioner Marseglia, Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner DiGeralamo, myself as a member of the Board of Elections, and Mr. Khan, Chief County Solicitor. I congratulate you for a job well done.
And before anybody leaves, Commissioner Harvey?
And just, you know, to, to add on to that, and first up, you know, I'm not going to add too much to, can't really add anything really to what Mr. Khan said. Ms. Vanderkam is basically, was the front line in the courts across the street when people were trying to challenge the rights of Bucks County citizens to vote, and the record shows that she was undefeated. And so I think one of the lessons is that, that the, actually the Trump campaign learned is you shouldn't, shouldn't mess with women from Michigan. But something else the county commissioners can do is periodically, when there are citizens of the county or people who have done service to the county, that we feel deserve special recognition in addition to the plaque, there is a commissioner's tile which is made. It is not really given out very often. We did give these to people who were on the transition committee for us, for example. But this is something else we wanted to present to her. I'd recommend keeping this sort of out of the reach of the kids at home, but, but no, we really, we cannot thank you enough for all the work that you've, you've done over the past year, really, and especially because knowing, you know, how hard, how many hours you put in and time away from your family, and so thank you very, very much. Come down and give us to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to the commissioners, Mr. Khan, Judge McGuffin. I, if I would have known it would have been such a big event, I would have wore better shoes, my snow boots. Mr. Khan called me, I think in March or April, I was picking up milk at the grocery store, and he said, can you be here right away? I have an issue with Board of Elections. And I've been assisting Mr. Khan ever since through the 2020 election, and I'm just so proud to be part of a team that could work so hard and diligently in 2020 in just unprecedented times. What people don't know about the commissioners and how much you're involved is that you were working to protect Bucks County voters from the outset, whether they were waiting in lines, making it easier for them to get into Board of Elections when those lines were so long, in the weeks leading up to the election, working on Election Day to try to get people into the precincts, and then fighting for votes to count regardless of the political affiliation. People think that you knew, but the beauty of those fights were that we were fighting for the votes, not knowing whether or not they were cast by Republicans, Democrats, independents. We were working for every Bucks County voter for those votes to count all the way up to the Supreme Court. So thank you so much for allowing me to be part of that process. It really was such a pleasure.
Thank you. Jean?
I've been screaming from as loud as I could before, during the election and after the election, that our election here in Bucks County was safe and secure. And Jessica, you were a big part of making that happen. And there were some days that we, we were having meetings and I didn't know what direction this was going to go in, but you had a steady hand on the ship and you just kept moving in the right direction. And thank you. Thank you for your good work, and, and Bucks County should be very proud of the election that we ran in 2020, and you were a big part of making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to have great stories for our grandchildren someday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Harvey?
Just a few things, kind of will dovetail or segue from the election things. Mentioned at our last meeting that part of Act 77 mandates that counties mail out applications and letters to anybody who at any point last year checked the box to be a permanent mail-in voter. Permanent doesn't necessarily mean permanent. Permanent just meant permanent for that year. So you do have to do it again. Again, this is a state law, we're just complying with the state law. As, you know, Commissioner DiGeralamo has been fighting to sort of make the changes to Act 77, all of us sort of agree there are changes, it's a good law, but there's need to be some changes, that's certainly one we'd like to see changed. Those letters have been printed, they were going into the mail this weekend, obviously the snow is going to have an impact on that. But I thought it was interesting in the Philadelphia Inquirer article over the weekend, that there was a neighboring or a county very close to us that admitted that they didn't even know they had to send letters. And by the time that article was printed, our letters were already printed in, in the mail. So kudos to Gail Humphrey, Chief Clerk, as well as Tom Freitag and our Board of Elections staff for that. So when you get those, you can do it online, you can mail it, you can check it off and send it back, but that's why you're getting it again. Listening to Bernard Griggs earlier talk about African-American History Month reminded me when I was, Commissioner Marseglia mentioned being a supervisor in the, in the nineties, I, I started teaching in the early nineties, mid nineties, before the internet, before Google. So research projects still involved taking the students down to the, to the library and, in the school, media center, and just letting them have a couple of periods of research. And one of the projects I used to do was studying the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. I'd give out names of obscure people that the kids had never heard of. And I'd have them just, you know, do a quick research, take a period and, and figure out who this person is. And the lesson was really about all the people who don't make it to the history book, but who've had a huge impact on American life. You know, most of the kids, you know, at that time, it would have been, I guess toward the end of Michael Jordan's career, but they knew basketball, they knew Michael Jordan, they, you know, LeBron hadn't come around yet, but they had no idea who James Naismith was, the founder of basketball. And so somebody would, you know, look that up and realize, oh, I didn't know, I'd never thought about somebody who created basketball. So there you go. Nellie Bly was a pioneer in journalism in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. Unusual to begin with to have a woman. Unusual to begin with to have a woman in journalism at that time, but really one of the creators of investigative journalism. And so she was somebody that they would research. But there were always a few names I'd put in, Garrett Morris, Andrew Beard, C.J. Walker. And I'd pay attention to what students got those names, and I'd kind of watch them go from encyclopedia to encyclopedia, from book to book, and I'd watch their frustration level rise. And finally, I'd just kind of wait until they came to me, and invariably they would, "Mr. Harvey, this person can't be that important, or they didn't do anything because they're not in any of the books I'm looking for." And I'd say, "Well, this Garrett Morris guy, he invented the streetlight, and he invented the first gas mask." You know, Andrew Beard created railroad coupling mechanisms for railroad cars that are still used today, 100-something years later. C.J. Walker was, you know, one of the first female millionaires. And they'd say, "Well, why can't I find them? I don't see them anywhere." And then I'd point out the fact it was because they were African-American, and encyclopedias didn't care about them. And this was, again, the early, mid 1990s. And that was part of the lesson. And I'd have them explain that to, you know, the rest of their classmates when they talked about it. And then eventually, I'd ease up on them and show them the books where they actually could find, you know, the information and find out who the people were. So, you know, it is certainly something we need to kind of always be conscious of the fact that there are a lot of stories in American history. I used to joke about 16 million people served in World War II, which means there are 16 million stories about World War II. And not all the stories get told. Many don't get told. And we're just starting, in some cases now, to hear some of those. And so it's, but it is all part of our story. It's part of the American story. You know, it got us to where we are. And so that's something that we always try to remind ourselves of when we think about, you know, who we are as Americans and whose stories we need to tell. And lastly, just a hard pivot, sorry, but one of the things we're trying to do, meeting with our Economic Recovery Task Force in the past couple of weeks, is, you know, still paying attention to the businesses out there in Bucks County who are suffering, still struggling to make ends meet. And so we really are encouraging people, we're going to try and roll out something sort of more comprehensive in the next couple of weeks, encourage you to buy bucks. Go to a Bucks County business. If you want to go shopping somewhere, if you, you know, if you can afford to do it, going to a restaurant, you know, when you can take, doing takeout, but try to give some of that money, you know, to our Bucks County businesses. Just, I know a lot of people have been doing it to help keep businesses afloat, but just trying to get people to make more conscious effort. We know we, I think we all feel like we're close to the end of this, but we need to keep our businesses alive and help them put food on the table for their families for the next few months. So, buy bucks as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's important to remember. Commissioner DeJure Alamo?
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. Just a couple of quick points. About 10 minutes ago, I think the governor got started with his budget address for 2021. And, you know, the state budget has a big impact on Bucks County and the funds that we get. You know, there's been some information that's been put out there. He's going to propose a tax, again, on the shale industry, something that I think is long overdue and that I support very much. He's going to propose an increase in the minimum wage here in Pennsylvania. It's something which I all think is also well-needed and that I would support. He's going to propose legalizing marijuana here in Pennsylvania, which I do not like, and I would not support if I was, had anything to say about it. Decriminalizing marijuana, I mean, I think it's something that we should be working on and would be important to get done here in Pennsylvania, but not legalization of marijuana. And also, as I look in Washington, and I watch what's going on down there with this stimulus bill, the bill that the President has proposed, and, you know, I've been watching and reading the newspaper and watching the news. There's kind of like a counter-proposal from the Republicans. And, boy, I wish they would get a bipartisan agreement on putting a new stimulus package in place. I think that would be important for our country. I'm not sure if that's going to happen. In my opinion, I would like to see this closer to the $1.9 billion if there is going to be a bipartisan agreement, because there's an awful lot of need out there. There's still an awful lot of people that are struggling and suffering and could use some of this money. I'd look at the proposal for the $1,400, in addition to the $600 that we just recently got, and I think that's the right thing to do. I really do. And, you know, something I thought about this, and I haven't heard people say this, but they're basing that income limit, like they did the first two times, on the 2019 tax returns of people. And there are an awful lot of people that in 2019, before the pandemic hit, were doing pretty well, you know, both husband and wife working, I mean, they had jobs. But there's an awful lot of those people that are not doing as well in 2021 as they were doing in 2019. A lot of parents, whether it's the mom or dad, are having to stay home with their children because they're not going to school. That limits one income from the family. I mean, there's a lot of people that are in need. So, they're going to use the 2019 income. I mean, I think they've got to really keep that at $1,400 and do it the same way that they've been doing it. I think it was $75,000 for an individual and $150,000 for two people who are filing jointly. I think they should keep it like that. I think the $1,400 is the right amount of money. And also, which is going to impact Bucks County, there's money in there in the President's plan for state and local government. And I know we can use it, and I know we'll put it to good use. And I know there's a lot of families, individuals, businesses, nonprofits, all these different groups and organizations that are still really struggling, and we'll put that money to good use, because there's a lot of people that don't want to give money to state and local governments, and I think that's wrong. I think there's a need. And, you know, we didn't raise taxes in our budget, and, you know, we want to keep it like that if we can. And I think us getting that additional money from state and local government would be a great idea. So, I mean, I think there's, I'd rather see this closer to $1.9 trillion than getting it down lower than that. I think there's still an awful lot of need out there. And hopefully, it'll get this done as quickly as possible. I would like to see it bipartisan, if possible. Right now, it doesn't look very likely that that'll happen, but maybe calmer, cool, more responsible heads will prevail, and they'll start working together and get something that's bipartisan and get it passed to get some relief to the people, because there's surely a lot of need out there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Such important things. Just one final go-round on this. Just since we've been in this meeting, which has been about an hour and 15 minutes, I saw that I have gotten another three emails from people asking how they can get the vaccine. And I could see by that first sentence that I can see when it comes up that they aren't happy. So I just want to reiterate that this is a supply chain issue, that if you watch any news channel, you will see they're talking about how there is not enough vaccine, not just in Bucks County, across this entire country, and that the makers of the vaccine are working as hard as they can to get it out, and then federal government will then deliver it to the state, and the state will deliver our share to us and the other shares to local hospitals, to pharmacies if they're working with a long-term care facility. But we can't give inoculations if we don't have the vaccine to give. We are ready. If you have registered on the portal, we will let you know. As soon as we hear we've got the vaccine coming and you can register, especially for the senior citizens who've been writing to me, I know you've been waiting and being careful, and this has been a very long, almost year now, but just a little bit longer. At some point, we will get a lot of vaccine. But for right now, we just have, we are just finishing first responders. So, thank you for your patience, and that's it. Are there any brief public comments?
Justice Commissioner, we actually have a question on that issue. It comes from Mark Lewis of Middletown Township. He says, "I have a question concerning signing up for a coronavirus vaccination. Would appreciate if any of the Commissioners could care to comment. I see that the Pennsylvania Vaccine Provider Information map presently shows 14 vaccine providers in Bucks County, including several pharmacies, and it is reporting that significantly more vaccinations are going to be provided by pharmacies soon. Recommended that everyone contact each individual provider in Bucks County on that map to find out if they have a sign-up list and try to get on their individual list, or is registering with Bucks County COVID-19 Essential Worker Vaccination registration on our website allow someone to be considered for a vaccination at all Bucks County vaccinations? Not, which location does someone consider for when they sign up on the county run website?"
So, I'm going to answer that first, and then we'll see what I forgot in there. Signing up on our portal takes care of your getting the vaccination from the county. It does not take care of your getting it from a hospital or from a pharmacy. My understanding on the pharmacy is that there was 1 million going to pharmacies across the entire United States. So, that's very few vaccines when you divide that by states and counties. I have heard that some pharmacies are taking applications and others are not taking applications. So, you know, it's a catch-as-catch-can thing. You can feel free to call all the pharmacies around here or go online, but some are and some are not taking a list of things. What did I forget? Anything?
The only recommendation I guess you could make is that we do know that hospitals are getting a lot of vaccine, and so doctors who have, or who are affiliated with those hospitals, in some cases, we know this is happening at Doylestown Health, in some cases, those doctors are being asked to prioritize their patients based on age and medical condition so that when the hospital gets, you know, enough vaccine, they can then start giving to patients of the doctors who are affiliated with them. So, some hospitals are doing that, some are not. Again, you know, none of us like this because it sounds like we're sort of kicking the can down the lane or passing the buck, but we have to be honest with you when we say that we really don't control any of this. And in many ways, we just aren't getting information that is going to be that helpful. We wish we were, but we're not. So, I mean, certainly you could contact the pharmacies in your area. Start with the one that you go to the most. Start with your, whatever doctor you have, especially if they're affiliated with a hospital, that could be helpful as well.
Yes, anything else? Thank you. Any other public comment?
No, Commissioner.
Okay. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.